Good afternoon, welcome to the June tenth two thousand twenty five City of Apopka Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. If you would please stand with me for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For each agenda item this evening, there will be a public comment section for each individual thing on the agenda. If you have a comment or would like to speak on that item, then if you await to that time, I will recognize members of the public to speak. If you have something that you would like to bring to the board that is planning and zoning related, that is not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to be recognized. Seeing none, we'll move on. Alright, item number one Legislative Ordinance three one one zero Future Land Use Summit at Wolf Lake, Wolf Lake Ranch Phase Three. Owners David Lutz Life Estate, Mary Lutz T Life Estate, Rem David Lutz and Michelle M Gregory, applicant William Mackey. Location north of Poncan Road, east of Poncan Pines Road and west of Jason Deli Parkway, Miss Sanchez.
Mister Chair, um staff would like to request the items, public hearing items one and two um are administratively pulled due to discrepancy in advertisement. Um it will come back before you um at the August twelfth Planning Commission Meeting.
Very well. Um do we need to do a vote on each item or just both together?
Uh Chairman, uh really, I I think staff has administratively pulled it, so on staff's end, uh if um you all would like to take action and address both, you could do one by a simple uh single motion.
Okay, alright.
And I I do believe the uh approval of minutes needs to be addressed as well.
Um the approval minutes is not prepared yet.
Okay.
So we're gonna put that off till next meeting.
Okay, very well.
Alright, can I get someone give us a motion to table items one and two?
Mister Chair, I I'll create a motion to uh table item one and two till August meeting.
Thank you Commissioner Doomey, do I have a second? Second Commissioner Washington, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We will move to item number three. Zoning variance maximum building height. Two five six zero West Orange Blossom Trail, owners MG eighty eight Central Florida Cold Storage LLC. Applicant Jason Enot. Location two five six zero West Orange Blossom Trail, Mister Song.
Good evening, this is Dr. June Zone Planner at the Community Development Department. The applicant has submitted a request for a zoning variance to increase the maximum building height at the property located at twenty five sixty West Orange Blossom Trail. The current land use of the property is industrial and zoning is light industrial. Per the Land Development Code Article three, Section three point five point three point C, the light industrial zoning districts allows a maximum building height of forty five feet and the applicant is seeking a variance to allow building height of fifty eight feet. The Development Review Committee has no objection to this request and the Planning Commission may choose to approve the variance, approve the variance with a modification and or conditions or deny the variance. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions and the applicant has requested uh the opportunity to give a presentation.
Thank you Mister Song. Does anyone have questions of staff? Commissioner Ryan.
So what is the hardship for this variance?
I would like to defer that question to the applicant to explain their hardship.
Okay. Hold on one second. Does anyone else have questions of staff?
No.
I I I don't know if this is for the staff or not, um but I have questions regarding traffic.
Um so since this is a zoning variance, uh we do, we did not request for any traffic analysis. Um but they will come back for their um development plan, right? Yeah, they will come back uh for their development plan with the traffic studies.
Alright, thank you Mister Song, um applicant available. Name and address for the record, please sir.
Ben Henry, two five six zero West Orange Blossom Trail. Good evening Board, uh my name is Ben Henry, I'm here on behalf of Mandate Group MG eighty eight uh Central Florida. We are the proud owners and operators of Cold Link Logistics located on Orange Blossom Trail in Apopka. This facility holds a special place in our company's history. In two thousand twenty uh this was our first cold storage warehouse that we purchased and operated and remains our cornerstone of our business today. We're here tonight to discuss the expansion of our warehouse and operations driven by strong customer growth and need for cold storage services in the growing area. As part of this project, we are requesting a height variance to allow the building to reach fifty eight feet. This added height will enable us to maximize our existing footprint and provide the space and efficiency our customers require. The expansion will add over seventeen thousand pallet positions, creating numerous jobs and bring economic investment into the community. In addition, the project includes infrastructure upgrades to Mayflower Ave and improvements to the storm water retention pond, which will aid in flood management and uh for the surrounding neighborhood. Nat- uh nationally fifty eight feet uh top of building are becoming standard for cold storage development. Thanks to advancements in building design and safety, this variance will continue to maintain the highest construction and safety standards. I'd like to introduce several key members who are here with me this evening. Maurice Greer, our General Manager at Cold Link Logistics, who can speak further on customer demand and operational drivers behind the expansion. Carter Eifert and Andrew Vashon uh from Tippman Construction are trusted partners leading the construction and development. They will address the design, safety and technical feasibility of the building at this height. And Josh Enot from Kenley Horn, our Civil Engineer, who can speak to the site layout, infrastructure and storm water management components of the project. We appreciate your time and consideration and we look forward to continue our partnership with the City of Apopka as we invest in its future. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Anyone have questions while I know we do, um Commissioner Ryan, go ahead.
Okay, in in order to grant a uh variance, we need to um discuss hardship that would justify a variance. Can you, can you tell me what the hardship is or or?
So Josh Enot with Kenley Horn South, two hundred South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida. So the the hardship for this site is uh essentially that we can't expand anymore um horizontally and so that the idea is in order to to improve conditions with adding a pond on a site that currently doesn't have one and to um have this project be feasible without having to as essentially we were landlocked and the only way since we can't expand going horizontally is the expansion to go vertically.
So your project won't work unless you get the height adjustment, is that correct?
Correct.
Mister Mott.
I uh just happened to be at the Development Review Committee the day this was discussed.
Yes.
And traffic did come up. I drive this area often. Um I forget who was speaking from your entity, okay, um during that day, but um they were fairly assured that the truck traffic that comes in to deliver comes down four forty one, turns right or left onto Lakeview Drive and then right into the, you know, your property. Um I can attest to you that is not the case. Um I have been waiting for trucks to turn right coming out of there to then go across the railroad tracks to make a right onto Benyon to then go, you know, past Coca-Cola and get to that light. The the concern that I have, I don't have a concern with your height request. I have a real concern right now currently with the traffic, okay? The traffic that comes eastbound on four forty one to make a right turn onto Lakeview. The truck waits in that right lane until he's assured that he can make the right turn, which then takes up both lanes of Lakeview. There's no, that that turn radius, if if you all were to follow a turn radius requirement, you would not be able to do this in three locations. At the light at four forty one and Lakeview, at the four-way stop at Benyon and Lakeview and coming out of of your your property. Because they're just, you know, the the length of the trailer is is too great. So I see them waiting on four forty one in traffic moving, they're waiting. Um if if a truck happens to creep over to then make the right, they're still taking up both lanes of Lakeview. To make the right into the property, it's not quite as much because then they cut off and you can see where the ground has been uh clipped by the rear of the trailer. Um the trucks that came out, they had to wait until they could make a complete right turn, which stopped traffic on Lakeview to then go, which is very, very close to the train tracks. And then the train tracks from there to the stoplight as you get on to make a right on Benyon. Um again, that was almost a two-lane exit. As I was driving here tonight, knowing that this was on the agenda, I'm thinking to myself, you know, there's not a lot of train traffic, all that type of thing. I'm waiting tonight at the crossing, as I'm waiting there for traffic, the crossing arms go down and I'm like, you've got to be kidding me. And I start looking to see if there's a train and then they went up. I don't know if there's some test that they run on on the second Tuesday of of every month at at five ten or five fifteen. Um took me twenty minutes to 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 make uh I think six miles tonight, you know, in in that scenario. Um I I can only imagine uh and would not want to imagine any one of the drivers or delivery or entities that you are are dealing with get tripped, you know, clipped by a train, you know, in in that area. So that's my biggest concern. I understand he said that you will come back with a traffic uh study, that type thing. Um where we can approve or deny or approve with conditions. Um I would have to say I would like to see conditions that are related specifically to turn radius of semi trucks so that they don't have to turn into oncoming traffic to make the turn. That's my greatest concern and and I get, if I were a truck driver delivering to you, I would not come out of your business and make a left on Lakeview to then go to the light on Lakeview and four forty one. There'd be no way that I would go that way. I'd come out, make a right, 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 and then get close over there to the four twenty nine. Um just 'cause it's, you know, uh more accommodating if I would say from from a space perspective. So those are the, those are the real concern. I don't have, I don't have a problem with your height. Um you you get there, but the height will facilitate more delivery. I get that, totally understand that. But if if the traffic somehow is uh rectified somehow, you you know, so that everybody not trying to go every direction, so.
Yes, yeah, so uh it sounds like the the biggest, your biggest thing is is traffic, like traffic there is already, it's already pretty horrible. Um and and you you also said that you see a lot of truck traffic use Mayflower and then take a right onto Lakeview. And so you're concerned a lot about the different radius or radii along Orange Blossom Trail, Mayflower and Lakeview.
Correct.
Yeah, and and so I think with this variance, right now all we're requesting is that height variance, so that's the first step in this process. We'll, we'll be coming back through with the MDP and I believe that comes in in front of the board as well. And um we'll definitely take that into account while in our design. And we we have completed a a TIA and it does, it does mention some offsite improvements that are that are needed. So when we're, when we're going through that process, we'll, we'll provide that to you guys as well for your review. And keep in mind all of these turn radii and what's and making sure that that those work for the trucks and help with mitigating traffic.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions of the app?
Just a comment.
Oh, hang on. Commissioner Washington.
I defer to you, sir.
Alright, Commissioner Wood.
Um just one quick question. A comment was made that part of your property is still in the county. It's not all in the city that it will be annexed in.
Yes, that is correct. Let me see if I um I don't have, so correct, so under on the screen, under where it says swing two, there's a a small, oh perfect. So right here, there's, there's two lots right where that red dot is, and it's probably as big as that red dot, that are um that are currently single-family residential. However, they are owned by by the the Mandate Group who currently is o- operating at the at the site. So we're already in that annexation process and um where we've just passed the first reading on that and then the the second reading is next is next week, June eighteenth.
Okay, well, is it a little bit premature to asking for a height variance when you don't have um all the property within the city limits?
So i- it's our understanding, we we talked about this with staff a lot. Um 'cause we had, we had the same concerns that that you did. They they stated that since we are owned and operating on this current property and it is zoned industrial, that we can request the variance on this property. And then when the other two are annexed in, uh that's when we can submit for the MDP process. And and but the that height variance will continue with this property.
Okay, I'm a little confused here. Where are you looking to build a fifty seven foot high building?
Uh on the, on the screen, it's the
So the existing buildings are gonna be replaced with fifty seven foot high buildings?
Correct, yes.
And then you want to expand it into the property that is currently within the county, not the city?
Uh correct, on the site plan, yes, that's, that's what that is showing. And and this variance, though, is for the the property that is within the city, not, we're not asking for a variance on the properties in the county. However, when that is annexed in, the property will be combined and we'll have the the variance that um i- if approved, that is, we're requesting today.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Washington.
Uh thank you, Mister Chairman. The um he said something that made me think about something else. Thank you. So uh are you intending to knock down your existing buildings and reconstruct up to fifty eight feet?
No, no, we're not intending to knock down any existing industrial buildings. There are two residential buildings and those are the two that will be uh demolished and then uh this building will be built adjacent to the existing industrial building and will will be that the fifty eight foot high that we're requesting.
Okay, this is just a comment uh to the Planning Commission. We had a uh another applicant of about a year or two ago that had an interest in that property uh running from um four forty one all the way over to the railroad tracks along Lakeview Drive, I don't know if anybody remembers that. But uh are you the owner of that property? Do you understand what I'm saying, first of all?
Dude, I'm not sure which property. Let me, the, is it this property here?
Looks like that, yes.
That one? So we are not the owners of that property?
We're not. Okay, alright, it it doesn't have anything to do with our discussion tonight. But we had uh when another applicant came to us, we raised concerns about traffic. The uh Lakeview Road is extremely narrow, backs up all the time and uh what you are looking to do can only make it worse. It's just a comment, has nothing to do with the decision tonight.
Yeah, yes, and one of the
Comment?
Okay, okay.
Alright, very well. Does anyone else have questions?
I have a question, sir.
Commissioner Doomey.
Uh this is more for the business partner, but did you have any estimate on the number of jobs you are planning to add with this addition?
Yeah, yes, we do. I'll turn that over to the business side.
Thank you. Good evening, uh Maurice Greer, um twenty five sixty West Orange Blossom. Uh we're anticipating somewhere between fifteen to twenty jobs probably uh in the range of about twenty one dollars an hour hourly folks and about twice that for a couple of uh new salary positions too.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Okay. I'm sorry?
That that was additional with cur- okay.
Okay, I I I feel I'd be remiss if I don't clarify and and uh our city attorney said we have the variance in front of us and we're asking questions that aren't really relevant to the the variance. I mean, to say the traffic, yeah, maybe it is and isn't. The question in front of us is it's, are we going to allow them to go the extra eighteen feet or whatever it is? And I I think we're, we're getting a little preliminary here and and uh Commissioner Woods, a lot of times things run concurrently, you know, to get things done because of the the dragging bureaucracy of the city and the county, so they're applying for one thing and they're getting the variance and that puts this out of the way and so our, our question here is a single item. The variance, do we allow them to make the building higher than what our code requires and that's it, simply that. That's what we're making the decision on, nothing more.
Sir, sir.
And I don't know that we could put a condition on it that would be relevant to traffic. As Commissioner Mott had suggested, I don't think that would be allowable to say you're, you can't have a variance for height unless you make the road wider or something like that. Am I correct?
That'd be more relevant during the planning or the the site plan process.
Okay, very well. Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, is anyone from the public which should speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mister Chairman, I'm, I'm fine with creating a motion, but I want to say something first. You know, the, the reason I ask about the jobs is because we have to consider all the different variations. If there's gonna be increased traffic with this variance, is it gonna be a net benefit to the city? And I think it is with new jobs and new opportunities out. And for that reason, I'm willing to create the motion to approve this special exception.
Motion by Commissioner Doomey, thank you sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mott, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, on to site plans. Invitation Cove Major Development Plan, owners A and R Meridian Apopka Development LLC. Applicant Kim Fisher. Location west of Sheeler Avenue and east of South Christina Street. Mister Hamza.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amir Hamza. I'm a planner. The applicant has submitted a uh major development plan for property located at seven thirty Monroe Avenue, just uh east of um um Chris- South Christina Street and west of Sheeler Avenue. The major development plan is called Invitation Cove, which is a proposed subdivision that consists of forty three townhome units. And uh let's go back. Yeah, and this is the major development plan. It includes um like like as I mentioned, forty three uh townhome units and it's uh divided into six different uh townhome buildings. Where between each building has about between seven to eight units. Then um the, let's go back to the previous slides and uh these are the vicinity and aerial maps of the seven thirty Monroe Avenue site. The total site area is five point six seven acres and as you can see on the aerial, the site is currently vacant. Then the future land use for the property is a mixed use and the zoning for this property is a MU dash D, mixed use downtown zoning district. The Development Review Committee re- has recommended approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Invitation Cove Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for further questions.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have questions of staff?
I do.
Commissioner Washington.
Can you rewind through the map so I can see where the retention ponds are?
Yeah, let me just go back right here. Retention pond's on the both the west and east side. In the middle, there's two of them, track D and track E.
Okay, and um if we did have a, you know, severe weather and the ponds overflowed, where would, where would the water go?
Uh that's a question the for the engineer to answer, so I'll refer to her.
Right, anyone else have questions of the app?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan.
The traffic is coming from Monroe, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, are there any left turn lanes or right turn lanes?
Yes, there's a proposed left turn lane from Monroe Avenue coming to the west direction toward for the property.
And a right turn lane?
Uh yeah, and a right turn lane as well from coming from the east.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I got a question, Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Doomey.
Uh yeah.
Didn't we see something on this property before?
Yes, uh previously there was a plan for uh multi-family development apartments on the site, but uh this is a completely different project and now uh different developers coming in and to develop uh townhomes on the property.
So what happened to the other one?
Uh it just uh never uh got, yeah, just.
Alright, anyone else? Thank you, sir. Is applicant here, do they have a presentation?
Good evening. For the record, Kim Fisher, sixteen fourteen White House Tribe Winter Springs. Um I'm representing the applicant who is here, yes. Good memory, we were here for an apartments previously and now we're going to townhomes. Um we don't have a presentation, we wanted to thank staff for their hard work and I'm here if you have any questions for the storm water. It is a dry pond, for the most part, um it'll hold a a larger than normal event and then there'll be an emergency owl fall that'll connect to Monroe. So I'm here if you got any questions.
Anyone have questions of the app?
Just one, come on, I drove a long ways.
I got, I got one more.
Commissioner Doomey.
So when I look at this major development plan, I that, that is a tree lot right now.
Correct.
Mature oak trees. You're gonna tear all those trees down and basically
We've got an area that we're gonna be saving, um and right now it from an aerial, it looks great, but the fact of the matter is, it's a dumping site right now. The owner's been having quite an issue with, I don't wanna say in a bad issue of code enforcement, but getting people to stop dumping there. So he has to keep paying money to clean up the site because people keep dumping.
Understand that, but there's no, there's, I I'm just looking at the, I don't see any, I don't see the area of
Track E is a tree preservation area.
I see track D, but it looks like it's a retention pond, not trees.
No, it's open space and it'll be saving trees there. Track E is adjacent to four thirty six.
So that's kinda like a buffer?
Oh, yeah.
We didn't really have to do a buffer, but
Maybe that's wrong term.
Yeah, it's landscaping, it's, it's landscaping and tree preservation.
Um I'm looking at the map
Hang on.
And track E.
Hang on, Commissioner Woods, please. Okay, anyone else have questions? Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Thank you.
Back to the map here, I'm looking at track E is Back to the map here. I'm looking at tract E is the um. One retention pond and then down below it, you also have tract E. Is that one big tract? Or is that a mix type of one or the other?
No, the tracts for retention ponds is tract D and E. Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, the south side inside of E has a retention pond along the east. And then along the south side is a strictly open space tree preservation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm sorry, I didn't realize they were named the same.
All right, does anyone else have questions? Commissioner Ryan.
Okay, buildings uh one and six, are they rear loaded townhouses?
All of the townhomes will be rear loaded.
I don't, I don't know how they can do a rear, rear loaded on six and one. Uh, I don't see any access to it.
There, there's an alley behind them.
I, I know, but how do you access the alley, alleys? That's where I don't see where the access point is.
Let me come up there and point. My finger tells a picture.
No, you can't, you point on the screen?
Ooh, I gotta go slow. Is that me? Okay, the cars will come in here and then turn right here. This is the street. That's the alley and this is the main street. I'm not very good at video games either.
You're doing great. What about building, building, I'm concerned about building one and six.
And then, I think I'm on unit, building one and building six. Yes, I'm there. Okay.
So when you come in the site, you can turn right here. And or you can turn right here. This is an alley. Yes, the front faces Monroe.
That makes sense now.
All right. Anyone else have questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I just don't think, Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's adequate protection of the, 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 the green space on that property.
Did you, well, on the page two, um what does it say? Landscape plan shows a variety of trees being proposed. The project area includes southern magnolia live old cabbage pond and new pond holly trees. Also a fifteen foot buffer proposed in the north, east and west property line. And I'm assuming all those buffers would be trees.
Fifteen foot's about the distance between Mr. Commissioner Washington and myself. That's not very much. So I'm just telling, I'm telling you, you know, I.
Are you, are, are you concerned the trees or the buffer?
I'm concerned with the buffer. I'm concerned with the, that, that is a natural landscape right now. I'm concerned with tearing all those trees down to put these townhouses up. And just protecting fifteen feet on the south side, uh dry pond on the east side, which is also labeled tract E. On this map. And I don't, I just don't see on this map the delineation of how they could have a fifteen foot buffer on here. On the north side of the property.
Is there a wall around the uh development?
I don't know.
Is there a wall around the development?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Is there a wall around the development?
No. East side, it's, yeah, east side there is, yeah.
What, what type of road, what type of wall are you putting up?
Oh, hang on, it, it, let me have the applicant come back.
You're right, my, my mistake.
Ma'am, if you would please come back, I'm sorry.
Sorry, um I believe the code required a block wall along that east property line and um. I mean, we tried, we begged to get out of it, but code required a wall along the east.
Yes, but what type of wall do you plan to put in there?
I believe it's required to be a block wall.
Nationality wall?
All right, thank you. If you would please just wait one second. Anybody else have questions or anything that's gonna require this young lady's assistance? We wanted to make sure you got your long drive worth of questions.
And, and when we do code required buffers, so we did put the code required buffers in there. Um, so you'll have landscaping around the perimeter as well.
Very well. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we've already done public comments, so we'll bring it back to the board for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that uh the planning commission recommend the approval of Invitation Cove major development plan.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Mott. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Woods. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. The site plan number two, this is quasi judicial, so I'm going to announce the. What the request is and the summary, and then I'll ask that question. Owners. Kelly Park Land Investments LLC, applicants Polis and Bennett, care of Genevieve Labuda. Partial identification, uh location, east of Round Lake Road, south of Bondage Road and west of Zebra Lily Avenue. To approve uh the, what the uh crossroads at Kelly Park Phase two B plat. Has anyone here had any qua- or ex parte communication on this matter?
No, sir.
Very well. All right, Ms. Sanchez.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the crossroads at Kelly Park Phase two B plat. The sub, the subject property is located east of Round Lake and south of Onditch Road, approximately eighteen point seven five acres in size. The plat for crossroads at Kelly Park Phase two B is to create ninety single family lots, roads and other infrastructure required. For the construction of this portion of the crossroads de- development. This plat also serves to establish portions of Scrub Hickory Avenue, Zebra Lily Avenue, Nicker Bean Street and Mars Field. Marshalders Street, rights of ways to support the expansion of and connectivity within the crossroads at Kelly Park Development. The plat is consistent with the Kelly Park Property Major Development Plan approved by the City Council on August third, twenty twenty two. The, as well as the crossroads at Kelly Park Phase two B Construction Site Plan approved by the Development Review Committee. In November twentieth, twenty twenty four. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the crossroads at Kelly Park Phase two B plat. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Very well. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff? Commissioner Ryan.
How wide are the lots?
Um, I'll defer that to the applicant, sir. I don't quite recall this portion of crossroads.
And let me ask you another question. Are these, are these bungalows or single family homes?
These are single family detached homes.
They're not bungalows?
They can be single family detached bungalows also, you know, bunk, like, single family detached homes can also be bungalows. But these don't appear to be bungalows.
I'm sorry, my question is, are they gonna be bungalows?
I don't believe they are, sir, but I'll defer that to the applicant for confirmation.
All right. Okay, we can, we can defer that to the applicant. All right, does anybody else have questions? Very well. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. An applicant here, please come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Genevieve Labuda, applicant, address is two six oh two East Livingston Street. Um, these are gonna be single family homes. The lot sizes are between fifty two to fifty five feet.
So they're not bungalows? You don't plan to build bunk, okay. Thank you very much.
I do have a question, um. Overlay here says uh front yard fifty feet minimum. And it's uh front yard on a transition district overlay is fifteen feet or ten feet minimum. Um, what's the driveway length on these properties?
Uh, turned it off. Okay, sorry. What is the driveway length on these properties?
I'm actually not sure. That's not um normally something that we cover on plots. It's part of the uh construction plan approval.
Alrighty.
You're, uh, I can defer to Jean. I mean, you're at the end of the process. So we've gone through like the development plan, the construction plan approval. Uh, several of the phases in this neighborhood have already been plotted or under construction. So this is just to subdivide this particular phase so that we can start vertical construction in this area.
Very well. All right, anyone have, any more questions? Comments? Very well. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Unless Mary's grandson does, I don't think there's any other options. All right, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of the crossroads at Kelly Park Phase two B dash plat.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Norwood. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Do we have any old business? Any new business?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner Washington.
Well, I'd just like to say congratulations to uh Chairman Gussler. Uh, Mary Norwood and Wes Doomey for your reappointments. To the planning commission.
Well, thank you, sir.
That's all.
All right, any more new business?
I have a question.
Okay. At the same time? Is that so? Wouldn't the budget meeting be held here or is it a, a closed door meeting?
It's held here, sir, and tentatively have been told by um. Our planning manager that the July meeting may be canceled or postponed.
Our meeting or theirs?
Um, planning commission. For July.
So we get a free pass if they have the budget meeting then?
I think so.
There you go. All right, all right, anything else?
You will get an email confirming that, by the way.
Okay, I don't ever read those. Ask Erin.
Perfect.